And posted on the www.minnahaw county.org for viewing by the general public. Before we get started, we have a new planning commission member. His name is Ryan Vanderflit. We'd like to welcome him tonight. And I will be the chair for the Minnehaw County Planning and Zoning and Laurie Lidkey will be for the city side. Both the city and the county planning commissions serve as zoning board of adjustments to consider variance applications within the joint jurisdiction. This area is displayed on the screen. After information and testimony is presented on an agenda item, we will discuss the matter and then each of us will decide and vote independently to arrive at a decision. Action taken out of variance may be appealed to the circuit court in a manner and form as provided by the statutes of the state of South Dakota. The first thing on the agenda tonight is input from the public. You can speak on any item that's not listed on the agenda and you are given five minutes per person to address the commissions. Is there anybody here that wishes to do that? Next, we will consider the minutes from the May 21st meeting, Joint Board of Adjustments meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the May 21st Joint Zoning Board of Adjustments meeting?
So moved.
Motion is made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Item number two, our staff, Kevin Hoickman, will present the variance 18-05.
Good evening. Kevin Hoickman, County Planning Department. Variance number 18.5 is a variance to reduce the required rear yard setback from 20 feet to 15 feet on property legally described as Lot 4A, tract four of Pleasant View Acres in the south half of the northeast quarter, section 1910148, which is Split Rock Township. It's located along Arrowhead Parkway on the east side of Sioux Falls, as shown on the map. The zoning ordinance, the joint zoning ordinance requires 20-foot rear yard setback and as noted, the petitioner is requesting a 15-foot yard setback. The proposed addition, he wants to put an addition onto the building and the addition is shown on this picture would be used for assembly and storage related to heating and plumbing business that is located at the site. Staff did visit the site on June 6th to take some site photos and I'll show them through after I'm done presenting here. But as part of the request as a variance, the board of adjustments is to consider various considerations that I'll read off here. The first consideration, that specific circumstances or conditions such as exceptional narrowness, topography, or sighting exists. Other than the small size of the parcel, the parcel does not exhibit any special circumstances that are different than other properties in the area. And the C Commercial zoning district does not have a minimum lot size as other zoning districts may have in the joint area. Number two, that the variance is not granted to use which is otherwise excluded from a particular district or diminish or impair the property values within the area. The current of the use of the property will not change, so granting this variance will not change the value of the neighboring properties or diminish the use of neighboring properties. Number two, or excuse me, number three, that due to specific circumstances or existing conditions, strict application of the zoning ordinance would be unwarranted hardship. This is the one that staff has the most concern about, that the petitioner is proposing a 20-foot addition, as shown on this map. He could still build a 15-foot addition onto his building and maintain the ordinance of being a 15-foot setback. So the proposed 20-foot addition would encroach five feet into the required setback and there's no, staff does not see unwarranted hardship that comes from this meeting the ordinance. Number four, that granting the variance is not contrary to the public interest and its harmony with general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. The proposed reduction of the rear yard setback may lead to other nearby properties requesting similar action and is kind of a precedence. The additional building space may reduce the amount of parking and loading spaces on the property as well. And then number five, that because circumstances or conditions, there are no possible way the property can be developed in strict conformity with the provisions of zoning regulations, that the authority of the variance is therefore necessary to enable reasonable use of the property. The property is already being used in a fashion that there's a building on the site and as noted earlier, there is already space enough to build a 15-foot addition onto the property instead of the requested 20-foot. And I'll go over the pictures here. So this is looking onto the property from the backside of the building. The addition will be going towards the wall on the right side of the picture, or kind of the south kind of part of the property there. Here I am standing on that wall and that wall is roughly the property line and it'll fill into that space and as you can see, there's some parking and storage used kind of in front of that wall there. At the site visit, staff did notice that there's the parking situation of the building in general and it was noted that, and one of the things that, if we were to allow this, it would maybe reduce the allowed parking on the property as the petitioner already has vehicles parked kind of everywhere, so to speak. This is essentially an alley that goes back to the other properties and these vans would, can possibly inhibit traffic going through. But there is in general enough parking for the use as it's an industrial type of use and they have enough parking in the front, show the picture, but they do have enough parking along the front of the building for their employees and any customers. So, that's the pictures I have. Staff finds the proposed setback reduction is not in conformance with nearby properties or necessary for an addition to be built, so staff recommends denial of the variance to reduce the rear yard setback, variance number 1805. Is there any questions?
There are questions for you. Is the petitioner here?
Yes, yes.
Will you please come forward, state your name, your address, please?
My name is Roger Saylor. I'm the husband of the wife that's the building legal owner. I'm also the owner of Roger's Plumbing Heating. We operate business out of that building right now. I do have some pictures I would like to share with you concerning a couple of the, I had taken some footage actually today and it shows that one of the things was the property around it that was said as only 15 feet and 34, 32 feet from the other building across the street. We're asking for five more feet than the legal requirements. That's what we're petitioning for. I guess my thoughts is if you look at the parking, he already said that the parking was approved, we're asking for five more feet. There's plenty of room behind that yet and it's actually, nobody's blocking any vision or anything like that. It's just asking for more square footage. If we were to build 20 feet versus 15 feet, we would be increasing potentially 270 square foot of storage is what I'm asking for basically, for the additional five feet. Kind of marked it off, it's 17 feet is what you legally want now and it would be 20 feet from the building instead of 15 feet if you look at the picture. There's still another 15 feet for passage behind it and for parking and for storage, outside storage. I guess that's where I'm at.
Any questions for the petitioner?
Madam Chair.
Jeff?
So Roger, but you really don't use any of this for parking at this point, right? You just park out front?
No, we don't use any of the parking, but my building is such that we need more storage space and that's, the availability is there. If you look across the street, I have another picture across the street, they've only got 15 feet. I mean, one of the petitions, I can't remember which one it was, about differences to different buildings, they've only got 15 feet and 32 between buildings. Like I said, I'm just asking for five more feet, which still gives us 12 feet. I believe it's 12 feet in the back yet.
So then all the stuff though, that's laying around there will go into that five feet?
That stuff that's laying around there is temporary, it's disposed of. It's just, it's old air conditioners and stuff that gets moved.
Right. So that would not be in that, in that five footer?
No, sir. I'm not sure, this property soon will be in the city limits before too long, maybe. I know there's some differences on that, but I'm not sure. I'm not a builder, but I believe the city codes now are 10 feet or 15 feet and we're actually meeting those requirements if this were to be annexed into the city limits in the future. So we'd actually be in requirements, still be approved by the city limits if it was in the city limits as their building codes are.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Are there any proponents out there besides the petitioner? Are there any opponents out there that wishes to speak? Okay. So, discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask the city, what is their setback requirement?
I'm not exactly sure if this would be considered light industrial or commercial when it was taken into the city, but still, based on the way it is currently, we respect the setbacks by the ordinance. So again, our recommendation is denial because it doesn't meet the setbacks as they are
Commissioners, any further discussion? Any comments?
I guess my only comment is the propane tank in there, how, does there need to be a different space between the building and that propane tank?
Sir, would you come up to the podium, please, again?
Does there need to be a minimum distance between the propane tank and the building?
There are legal distances on propane tanks, but that propane tank with the addition will be removed. We're going to go electric heat instead of gas, so that will be out of the picture. Yes, there are legal limits as far as I'm aware of too.
City side, any comments? Any motions on the county side? Jeff?
Come on, you guys. I tell you what, I'm pretty familiar with this area and you know, it's, it is a little crammed in there.
I'm pretty familiar with that area because I live out there in that area, right next to Arrowhead Park. My concern is the roadways there will be changing at some point because of Highway 100. I don't know really the logistics of all that as it is. I believe that Highway 42 at some point will be a service road and that road will be extended further to the, sure, come forward.
It was just recently, we were approached by the state and city of the addition in the front, the existing road. The road that you see now, which is Highway 11, will be changed and that'll become a service road. If you look at the long-term, so actually, the whole purpose of me wanting to actually build in the back is because of more storage, but originally they were going to take parking, my parking space now was going to be taken away from me. They were going to just take it and we actually disputed that for a while and then they came up with a different plan to leave the parking what I have. So it actually would have been worse, but now the parking will be staying the same where it is and that road that goes there now is a township, county, township service road. That's going to be made into, the future plan is to make that into a service road that will take out because they can't have the approach that's on that. That addition now will be gone and that approach will all go out to the west and over to the, I believe it's to the transmission place, Aggie's Transmission and it goes out and that service road will become that way. So in the future, we won't even be able to go right, we'll only be able to go left and then out. So that was some of the reason why we wanted to build begin with is because they were taking my parking away from me, but that's been determined differently now, so their future plans anyway.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any further comments?
Madam Chair, my only comment would be, while I appreciate the necessity or the request for this additional five feet and also recognizing that storage for any business is a premium, my concern would be something like the staff commented, be setting the precedence, just because I don't really, from my point of view, see there's a necessary hardship at this point that would require a variance. So I guess with that, I guess I'd recommend, or make a motion for denial.
Do you have a second? Okay, motion is made, seconded to deny variance 1805. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. City side?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the item.
Yeah, a second. Discussion?
I want to echo what Mr. Alston said on the county side. I don't think we're in a position where we want to set precedent changing these setbacks because then it's going to become more of an issue for others wanting to do the same thing for the same reason. I'm sure there's good reason, logistics for his business, but from what I could see, even with the traffic, with the vans and such, he might be quickly outgrowing this facility. Not the worst problem to have, but probably not interested in moving, but in any case.
So your approval, is that for denial, is what you're saying?
Correct. Remember on the city side, we go approval and then we vote on approval as opposed to the contra.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I guess I agree with staff as well. It just doesn't seem like there is a real necessary need to do this and to change the variance, so I'm in agreement with the denial as well.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Sorry. No old business and there's no new business. Is there a motion to adjourn the Joint Zoning Board of Adjustments?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, sorry, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion adjourned.
Adjourned. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Good evening. I now call the order of this regular joint meeting of Minnehaw County and Sioux Falls Planning Commissions and as a courtesy, make sure all cell phones are turned off. Also, it will be broadcast via CityLink and posted on the www.minnahaw county.org site for viewing by the general public. The two planning commissions work together on land use and zoning matters within the rural areas surrounding the city. This area is displayed on the screen. After information and testimony is presented on an agenda item, the members will discuss the matter and then each planning commission will vote independently to arrive at a decision. Any filed action taken on the conditional use permit request will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of tonight's decision is filed in the county planning office by Monday, July 30th at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will refer to the county commission and the city council for a joint hearing on Tuesday, August 28th at 5:00 PM. That meeting is held in the Carnegie Town Hall at 235 West 10th Street. The rezoning item will automatically refer to the county commission and city council for joint public hearing on Tuesday, August 28th at 5:00 PM. And this meeting is also held in the Carnegie Town Hall at 235 West 10th Street. I just want to make a point that, is there anybody here in the public that would like to address the commission that is not here for anything on the agenda? Okay, at this time, the planning commission will consider the consent agenda and it looks to me like the only thing on the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes of the June 24th, 25th, 2018.
Approve of the minutes.
Okay, motion is made in second to approve the minutes of the June 25th meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the minutes from the June 25th meeting.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Move on to the regular agenda, item number two, Scott.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, Planning Director for the county. Item number two is a rezoning request 1807. This is to rezone property approximately three acres from, 3.21 acres from A1 Agriculture to the proposed Emerald Pines Plan Development request. The property is located approximately one mile west of Sioux Falls on Maple Street at 7701 West Maple Street. The applicant is requesting to rezone this area shown on the map from A1 Agriculture to the Emerald Pines Plan Development. It's coming out, it's a 3.21 acre parcel that's coming out of a 35 acre parcel that's owned by Mr. Myron Olson and the rest of the 35 acres will remain an ag at this time and it contains a residence, outbuilding, some pasture, as you can see on the map, and CRP. The applicant's request to rezone this to a plan development is to basically allow for the construction of a reception hall to be used for renting for private gatherings such as corporate meetings, weddings, and in addition, the building would also house a law office for Mr. Shanks who's here as well. The applicant has submitted renderings for the proposed wedding barn events facility, which I've included in your packet for your review. So generally, if you look at this map, there are approximately eight residences located within one-half mile of the proposed site and there are several dwellings that are located southwest of the site in the Village of Ellis, which you can see at the bottom left of the map. This is really sort of a transitioning area. There are some larger areas of agriculture area to the north. The George McGovern Middle School is approximately one-half mile to the east of this property along Maple Street. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Department has reviewed the request to rezone this to a plan development and they have recommended denial. They have encouraged the applicant to find an existing commercial property for development or property at a major intersection where the commercial, where commercial development has the infrastructure planned for future growth, which would be consistent with the shape Sioux Falls 2040 comprehensive plan. The county has identified, we have identified areas for commercial and industrial growth and we call those rural service areas and this property is not located within a rural service area. Ellis would be a rural service area, but this is not located in Ellis. The concept behind both, I suppose, of our rural service area and the city's shaped 2040 is to really identify areas which promote good planning ahead of commercial growth in the county. And the nearest, as I indicated, the nearest rural service area that, for the county is Ellis, which is shown on the map. It's a little bit of an interesting, when you really look at the entire situation and what they're proposing, it really is an interesting request because staff feels that the use of a wedding event center or this type of a wedding hall is really a growing trend in the community and we're seeing this, several of these requests are development throughout the area. And while it is sort of a quasi-commercial use, it really desires, they really need a desire, or they have a desire to be located in a setting, a serene setting that is, that usually cannot be achieved by locating it in a commercial development or an industrial development. For this reason, I worked with the applicant and I proposed that perhaps they could consider a plan development and I feel this potentially is a good alternative because it would allow for reasonable use of that property with specific, identifying the specific uses that would be allowed and that would be for the wedding event center and a law office and it would specify the exact size of the building. I sort of liken it, I think we need to consider, for example, a church. We have churches that are in residential areas. If they would have wanted to build a church at this site, it would have been a permitted use and I see a church being very similar to this type of a wedding event hall because they're basically, you have large number of groups of people that are coming and going and it's, you know, at a periodic time, it's not always, you know, in the eight to five during the day, it's on a weekend, so perhaps you could liken it to a church. However, I think you need to consider the traffic flows and the county would support, the county does support the request to rezone this to a plan development. I feel it's an innovative idea how to accommodate the use and still maintain control over it. Since really the city and the county staff have differing views and recommendations on this proposal and on the rezoning request, I'm not giving you a formal recommendation. I would ask you to, we would hold the public hearing and then you would be making your own determination and I did prepare a set of development guidelines, which I included for your review specifically for this Emerald Pines development. And so I would ask that you conduct your public hearing and make your decision based on the findings that you come to tonight and the recommendation, your recommendation will be forwarded for a public hearing with the county commission and the city council. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. I'll show you a few pictures of the property. This is the 3.2 acres within the long 35 acre parcel. This is what they're proposing on that 3.21 acres. And this is basically the site. There's an existing shelter belt and they wish to construct their facility on the south side of that shelter belt and east side of that shelter belt. This is looking at the proposed site. You can see if, basically Ellis, this is looking to the southwest. This is looking to the northwest. So that is the, basically the general site. You can see it's undeveloped at this time. The applicant would be constructing an access road off an existing approach through the residential farmhouse there into this property. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
I have a question. Has the fire department looked at, you know, if there's a fire or anything?
I don't know who the city routed it to. I don't know if the fire department looked at it.
That doesn't look like an easy road to turn if there's a fire, is my only thought on that. Was there anything from the city fire department? Was there anything from the city, fire department?
No, we didn't route it through fire. And again, our recommendation on this is denial. Certainly, if it goes forward, something that needs discussion or more review by fire, we can do that before the joint elected officials meeting.
Any other questions? Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward and state your name, address?
Hello. My name is Jason Shanks. I'm actually a co-applicant with Myron Olson, who's the landowner in this particular case. A little bit about background as, on this project. My, my wife has been a wedding photographer for about 10 years. I'm a second photographer, my daughter's a second photographer. We've got other family members, my brother's wife is a wedding photographer. So we've been in the industry for 10 years. So that, that's how this has come about. We are, we are looking to do the, the wedding barn. In addition, we're also going to be looking at other social events, so it won't be just indoor and outdoor type weddings and receptions, but we'll also be opening it up to the general public for family reunions, graduation parties, and, and other, other types of events. You know, my, my law practice is included in there simply because if I'm there in the building and I have to do some legal work, I wanted to be able to do that. You have to identify all of the uses when you're doing a plan development. But that's not one of the, the, the main uses that we're looking at this facility for. It is located in the middle of agricultural land, as you've seen. It will essentially be enclosed by trees on pretty much all sides. Our plan, if you take a look at it, there is an existing shelter belt there, but we will be adding a number of trees around the, on the south end of the facility, or the land, the plant, plan development, and then also along the east side of the, of the property as well. Basically, it's going to enclose the, the, the plan development, and it'll obstruct any vision from an outside of the plan development area. And those will be pine trees, obviously spruce, thus our name, Emerald Pines. That would be our, our plan. We understand that this is zoned for residential in the future. However, I did bring some information, I don't know if you want to put this on, but we have, I did go on Google Maps. There are, there are a few residences around this area. And, and we took some distances or measurements of, I'll let it pull up here. Well, maybe while it's going, the, the measurements that, that I took off of Google Maps show the distance from where our plan development would be to the nearest residence, and that was approximately 994 feet. There are two other wedding barns that are in the vicinity of Sioux Falls. One is over by Wild Water West, that is Blue Haven, one is down by Harrisburg, which is the Meadows Barn. Now, this, this is Blue Haven, and if you look at that piece of property, there are resident, there's a residential development that's just across the street there. It's 561 feet to the nearest residence next to that facility. So, you know, about half the distance from, to a residential home from our, where our facility will be. And then if you look also at, at the Meadow Barn down by Harrisburg, the distance for that one is measured at 888 feet. So that's even farther than we would be from, or that's closer actually than where we would be from any, any residence. We are planning for flexibility with our plan development. The access road that will be coming into the facility is an, will be an access easement. Now, what, what that means is that will allow us in the future, for future development of the land, if Mr. Olson decides he wants to, you know, develop residential homes on the property or develop the property in a way, we can move that road. So wherever we put the road, it'll be an easement, and will allow for future development on the property. We've also, on, on this property, you'll notice that the west side of the land is located on the half-section line. Now, we've also set our setbacks on our property with sufficient enough distance so that if we bring a road in there in the future, that will have far enough setbacks from any future road, that will be fine. And then if that occurs, we'd actually have a direct access into our parking lot at that facility because the parking lot is, will be right near the section line. So I guess the question becomes, well, why approve it? One of, we believe there's a significant public need, it's been referenced by Scott and our community. In the wedding industry, we've seen this over the last few years, is that brides come to us and they're asking if we know of anybody else who has barns? Because they can't get into the Meadows Barn and they can't get into Blue Haven. And the reason is, is that they book out years in advance. I've got another exhibit here that just goes through, you can go on their website and pull off all of their weddings for the next year and a half. And Meadow Barn has 84 weddings this, starting from June until next May, 71 at Blue Haven. If, if you project those out based upon past numbers, you're looking at 98 at Meadow Barn in a one-year time, and 83. And Meadow Barn, which will be a, similar in size to our facility, is now doing Friday, Saturday, Sunday weddings. And the brides that can't get into these are now going to the close, next closest barn, which is down in Canton. So that means we're taking brides and grooms, and they're going down to Canton, and they're spending their money at those facilities and using, spending their money down in that community rather than up here. We have a number of businesses that we will work with, other vendors in the wedding industry over the years that, that we have relationships with, that are, are following this very closely. We have some of them here with us tonight, that they will benefit, photographers, caterers, DJs, they're going to be associated with us, it will, it will promote some local business. And it will help, help not only us out, but it will also help them as well. We believe that this development will, I think one of the standards is, is that it must blend in with the existing atmosphere. It's a rural atmosphere. We believe that, you know, the barn with the trees and kind of a rural-type atmosphere, it'll blend in. It won't prevent future development in residential property. That's shown by the residential homes, particularly the, the Blue Haven facility, because there's, there's homes that are fairly close to that facility that is not inhibiting development. And we believe we've made some, some deep, some detailed provisions that will allow us to be flexible in the future with future development, moving roads. We've got setbacks, setback far enough, so. And, and this, this area is not pegged, I don't believe, to be residential until 2031 to 2040. It's a tier-three area, so. We, we believe it'll meet a significant, significant need in the community. It'll benefit small business in the area as well, and we'd appreciate it if you would recommend our plan development. Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Jeff.
Will the driveway and the parking lot be paved?
We'll do whatever is required by the county and the city. I believe Scott and I have had that discussion, and, and I'm, I'm not exactly sure, I, we, our design has it as either gravel or, or paved surface, so that'll depend on what is legally required.
So the way the ordinance is written would be if it, if the property is owned commercial or indus, or industrial, it would be required to be, have a paved access road, but it's not, it's owned by a development. And I talked to Jason and indicated that, that would be, that could be a decision that you could make if you wanted to approve it with a paved road or asphalt. That would be something that you could require.
It's about a $75,000 question.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, when you met with Scott, it sounded like Scott had gone over other properties with you that may be, that are already commercial or industrial. Had you considered other sites to build the event center?
Well, one, we considered this site because it's owned by family. And so in order to make it work for us, we have to use family land. If we're going to use other property, then we'd have to go out and purchase other land close to Sioux Falls, which is very difficult to purchase. We could go out, I mean, my parents live out by Colton, they've got, you know, 20-some acres out there, we could build out there. The problem is, is that you're so far away from Sioux Falls. And so by being close to Sioux Falls, what we would do is we would coordinate with the local, you know, hotels as far as transportation, so we don't have a lot of people driving out on the road. We could shuttle them, it would be closer. The farther you get out of the city, I, I think it's a little more difficult to do those types of things. It's not impossible, but to answer your question, we haven't really looked into it because we've got land, we're able to make it work, hopefully with a plan development, and that's the best option for us.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents out there that would like to speak on behalf of this? Are there any opponents out there?
I'll speak on behalf.
Okay. Come forward, please. Please state your name, your address.
Tony Becker, designer of this project, worked with WS Construction with Jason Shanks here and the family. They proposed this, as designer of this project, we have looked into these variables. You, you sort of spoke about the fires, fire route. Not only did we, I've talked with the fire department, as long as we provide access in, in a serviceable condition, and the fire trucks can turn around, they're fine. As long as the building doesn't, as long as the fire hoses and things like that can reach, we're still within serviceable distance. Depending upon how the building code department wants to look at this project, whether it be Minnehaha County inspection or the city of Sioux Falls. We've also gotten bids for a fire sprinkler system. The clients are well aware of those fees associated with that, depending upon how this building is looked in the building code department. The building structure itself, we currently are designing this building with what is called a structural insulated panel. It's going to better in energy efficiency as well as sound control within the building. That's something that a stick frame structure cannot. I mean, they're, they are scientifically proven to be better sound control. We've looked at the sound codes, the variances within how downtown Sioux Falls is having sound problems. We're looking at it and saying, you know, we're planting trees, we're designing the structure, we're trying to centralize it on this three-acre property. I mean, in my opinion, if there's more that you guys are concerned about, advise us, you know, don't reject it just because. I mean, we're kind of trying to make it flexible.
Any questions for him? Thank you. Go ahead.
Since you brought up the, the fire aspect again, is this property, I'm not familiar with the area, is it going to have rural water? Is it going to be well? Is it going to be?
When we looked at the research out there on the paved road out there, there is plenty of pressure out on the road. It has a six-inch water supply. Therefore, if a fire sprinkler system was to be required in the building, we have adequate amount of fire suppression within the building under a controlled fire alarm with sprinkler system, just like this building would have in the structure, if it's required. So yes, there is adequate amount of water within quarter-mile.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak on this item? Guess I'll close the floor.
A question for Scott. Scott, that's off of Maple Street, right? And Maple is paved at that location? Don't we normally require planned developments to pave at least the approach to the paved county road?
It varies. I mean, you can...
Because there's issues with gravel being dragged out there?
You can make that a requirement.
Thank you.
And I have discussed it with, as Mr. Shanks indicated, we discussed it.
Well, I was just thinking of not maybe doing the whole 75,000 there.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I, I like the idea of people going into business, and on the other hand, I, I do also, like I said, consider our infrastructure as far as gravel being dragged on the roads. I'll make a motion to approve this project with the condition that the approach to the highway for, what do you think, 100 feet is paved. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion being seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Look for a motion.
I vote to approve this item.
I second.
Do you have a motion to second? Any discussion?
I have a question for, for point of order, does that include the addition of 100-foot paved driveway?
Sure.
Just want to make sure.
No discussion.
Mr. Chair, on this one, I do, to Commissioner Barr's point, like to see people go into business. I don't think this is a traditional commercial scenario. I would however, it, it did make me nervous hearing words like, whatever's required, whatever's required, when it comes to fire suppression in the middle of the field, plug it up to the, to the stable water supply and make sure it's got suppression systems above and beyond a typical barn in an agricultural surrounded setting, or this is, won't end pretty. I just have memories back to a gentleman who wanted a fireworks business and felt rickety sheds were a great place for it, just because it was catty corner from a fire department station. Just, eh. Don't do what's required, go above and beyond would be my only thoughts. Thank you.
I kind of echo those same things, is the fire suppression system in itself. Being a maintenance person to a, a number of buildings within the city, I can see how important they really are. And in this case, who's the jurisdiction for the fire department? Is the city or is this rural?
It would be rural.
It'd be rural. So where do they have to come from? Where's, where's the?
Hartford, I suppose.
So they've come all the way out of Hartford?
I, I think that it might be, isn't, isn't it Wayne Township? They, they contract, so they contract with the city of Sioux Falls for fire protection.
There's a fire station right by, by, by beside McGovern.
Right. I am very familiar with that. That's why I was wondering if they were the ones that would respond, or if Hartford was the one that responded. Because if it's Hartford, you can see why the fire suppression system would be so good. So again, I echo what Commissioner Johnson was saying, that I would go above and beyond and put that sprinkler system in.
Could I ask a question of the city? Do you guys want that to be a condition of this? You know, curtains steved, you know, is this something we should require at this point?
I think any commercial, even in a public, I guess Scott could tell me if I'm, if I'm incorrect. That's at the, you know, building certi, or sorry, yeah, the building services.
Uniform code of, yeah, mechanical, yeah, uniform code.
It'll be reviewed, because it's a, it's a commercial, sort of a project commercial building, it will, a set of plans will have to be reviewed by the building inspector, and he'll make sure that it meets all of the prior code requirements, what's structural and required.
Building permit is what I was stammering for, sorry. So no, Commissioner, I wouldn't put it at this point.
Okay. Well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Pass. Passes, all those please, sir.
Thank you. I will move on. There, I guess there's no old business, no new business, and there's no county commission items?
Move adjournment of the joint meeting.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, move adjournment of the joint.
Second. First and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we go into our third meeting without getting out of a chair.
She's over there smiling.